Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, members of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote until further notice. In-person attendance is limited to Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee members, superintendent and district school administrators. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted at this time, however the meeting may be accessed remotely. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and school committee recorder and will be broadcast. It's also being recorded by members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So just, we don't have to actually take a roll call vote, but I will do that just so we all know who's here, since there are people online. Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Bonnie Von Befoni. Let's see here.
I do not see her.
Sarah Berloff. How do you pronounce your last name?
Borla.
Borla, okay, thank you. Bill Fields.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Cory Sprague.
Yeah.
Rich Dehony.
Here.
And Steve Bannon, present. We have in our packet the minutes of December first, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I should approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Bill. Any discussion? You're in none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstention? Unanimous. We're into the superintendents report.
Okay, so we're gonna jump right to something. We have Andrea Wadsworth here to make a presentation, and Andrea is well-known. She worked for the district and is now at BCC, but in her, one of her many other jobs, along with baking cakes, buy cakes from Andrea, is being the president of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So Andrea is here to make a presentation to Doreen. So I think probably come up, and Doreen, you should come up too.
Thank you, Ian.
Sure.
Thank you, everyone. It's an honor to be here with you. Do you want us to face you?
You're okay.
No, you're good, yeah, you're good. Yeah, I'm just got you.
It is great pleasure and honor that I'm here representing MASC. And we are here to give an award to Doreen for over, she tells me, thirty-seven years.
Wow.
As an administrative assistant in the district. So huge. But tonight, she becomes the two thousand and twenty-two MASC Council of School Committees' Administrative Assistant, Administrative Assistant of the Year for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So thank you so much, Doreen. And this is for demonstration of leadership, commitment to students, staff, and community at the Berkshire Hills School District. So we're so very proud of you, Doreen. Thank you for everything. Thank you. Our second person to receive this should have been the first. Well, okay, you can't fix that now, but you're number one in the state to be here. And great to you, and Dennis, you for keeping this board.
As always.
Yeah. I try.
You do more than that.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to do this one.
Thanks, congratulations.
Great news.
Andrea, let's stick around there, she could do life season. I'm talking about the hat. Did you have a nice tactic offer?
Yes.
You talk a lot, there's a question. If they all, I'll leave that. You better, you'd love to know that. Okay, okay. Did you already send me one, or you will?
No, no, I will, I'm doing a presentation about it tonight. Welcome to see for that.
I'd love to see it, absolutely.
So congratulations, Doreen and Cliff, and everybody who's watching online. Don't feel an obligation to stay for the home meeting. Feel free to sneak out and have a celebratory drink. Yeah. Okay, I'm really excited about that.
Yes.
So the next thing, and we'll sort of do this in the orders, it's written, Anne Hutchinson, and we'll keep Andrea here for a minute, went to the MASC conference, and the district had a long tradition of sending people on a regular basis, and then we didn't for a while because of COVID and other things. This year, Anne went and represented us, and I was sort of joking, but she took me seriously, so thank you. But I was like, oh, we're gonna put together a slideshow. And then I, this morning, I was looking at my three hundred emails, and this is great slideshow from the conference. So give me just a sec to pull it up, and we'll go with Anne's slideshow.
So I can start talking. Not much of the slides are actually from, there wasn't really a way to make a slideshow out of the conference, because in the conference, people are talking at you. And some things here, one of the things was, there were no notes. I mean, a few of the presentations gave you a handout, but a lot of them did slides, and they just wrote their slides. And they don't give you like a website, like, here's a slide on this website, the vote of this school. And I imagine if I spent a lot of time looking for them, I could find them. Jake Everwens, I could find, and I will talk about Jake's. But most of them, you have no way of recalling it. And people were sitting next to me, and you'll see this, taking photos of the slides, right? Which is a crazy way to get the information. And it was like, am I in graduate, not even graduate school, undergraduate school, where I tried to complete notes like that, because there's gonna be a test? Because of course you can't pay attention if you're trying to take meaningful notes at the same time. So that was interesting. So.
Anne, just a sec.
And see, Anne invited me to that. And then every slide deck will be attached to the file and the MASC website. So I will, yeah, so I will check in line to see when that's updated. I will send an email to this entire board to make sure you guys know first. And then send that to the whole file.
Yeah, so there's.
But it should be, you're right.
Yeah. And obviously, it's much easier having a head of time, right?
Absolutely.
Or even outline sort of the head of time, you sort of, okay, so this is, I went down on Wednesday, this is, this is Thursday evening, this is Hyannis Port Beach, and it was evening, and I was, you know, get out, it's dark, and it's gonna be, it's about to be dark, so this is, we're losing light fast. So I did get that one in there. Beautiful weather, gorgeous, but of course you're in the conference. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about a couple of the things I went through. So this was Jake's presentation. So Jake Everwens, he did this online. So we went, sat and rode with Bill Cameron, who did a great job, and I was there, and there were some Southern Berkshire folks there, and then there were from another school district, Acton's what I remember, but it's a school district that is a bunch of towns, and one town is left, and I think they're trying to figure out their way forward, but they all voted to let this one town out. So this was really good, and that presentation is online, it's under the eight towns. I wanted to call, pull some slides out of it, but I can't, I can only download the whole thing. But it was a very good talk, and Bill spoke, Jake spoke, Uzi Preschgar spoke, all remotely. And there was, lunch was right after this meeting, and so somebody said, oh, let's get the Berkshire County folks together. So I did have lunch with, and I wish I'd had some of you there, because I had a very unusual lunch with folks, other folks from Berkshire County. So some of the other, so the next one. So I also went to the one about evaluating superintendents, and we can't really see this, but it starts at the bottom of the district goals, and then it goes to the superintendent's school committee goals, administrator goals, teacher goals, and student achievement. And it was an interesting talk, and I've got that one, they handed out a handout, it was Desi did that one, they handed out the handouts, I bought a copy for me and other people around the school, on the superintendency's out. It was pretty cut and dry, but this particular slide drove me nuts. So this is a photograph of the slide from the presentation. So that one drove me a little bit nuts, because to me, it should go sort of the other way around, like, you have the scaffolding of the district's goals down here, and then the teacher goals, but the student achievement should be like the big thing up at the top, not the little anything up there. It's like, the students just lost out on this one. And obviously, the goals get, you know, expanded as you go up, right? They don't get smaller. Your goals have to be in some way used to build a program. So that was the other bit of it, it's sort of like this, you can't just turn it over, because then it's gonna fall over. But it was kind of like, I want the students to be the bread and the yeast that's rising up at the top, and we got big things going on, not the little thing. Then the next one, so then Andrea Wadsworth right there. So these are taken from the program. So this was really interesting. This was the best presentation. It was, in a way, the scariest to be part of, because this was all done by people of color, talking about what's going on or not going on in the districts, and some really good stuff, a lot of really, really good stuff. But, and it was, you know, a general session, so it's a huge volume full of people. But they were really hitting the thing about equity, that, yeah, there needs to be a ton of support and making things available to every single kid. And I think we're doing a good job, given that, as all of the school districts there are white school teachers, you know, I think everyone in Massachusetts, what you call a white school district. But about how you really work on the equity part of it, and it's not equality, it's equity. And just really hitting home on that. And there'd been a presentation that same morning, I think that same morning, right, from Indigenous Peoples of the Cape, which was similarly like that, very much about equity. There's so much to be done because of all the damage that the colonial's, colonial powers that came into this country and built the education system, that how much it's gotta change. And some of them, I think, we're doing really well with. Revere was one that taught, they weren't part of this one, right? Revere was a different one, where they were talking about what they're doing. They're one of those school districts that has a lot of Hispanic folks. They give a, they did give an exam in fifth grade to determine your math for the rest of your school. So they already had sorted kids, and of course, they got them up with all the kids of color in one group, and the white kids in the other group, and that they've dropped it. So they dropped it a while ago, because they have already conceived that their scores are doing way, way better in high school, and they've got a lot of kids in high school doing advanced math. And so that was a really good one, because it really hit home about that, that they made a huge change. I mean, I was appalled when I heard they did that for fifth grade kids, but that, you know, I think we're not on that, there's a whole range of how kids get sorted out, but that was very, very, very black and white. And then, so I already talked about, oh, DEI's not checklist, so this is also from one of these talks. I think that, I don't know which one it's from, we'll get that picture of this slide. Again, this one to me is a whole bunch of words, because, because, and I think educators love words, love to throw a lot of words around. And this was another one that it felt like, okay, you're just making up a lot of slides with a lot of words on them, and it doesn't really mean anything to get to the gravy, which is the meat potatoes, or it's not the gravy, about what you do to make it, or anything else. I was also interested here that we, that there's a portrait of a graduate project, and we're not part of that, right? That is a school district presenting?
We are.
Okay.
So there's a group of schools doing it in Berkshire County that's funded in part by the Bar Foundation.
Okay.
We're also funded by the Bar Foundation, and we're doing it, and we check.
I know we're doing it, I just didn't know we were part of this.
We check in with them a lot, and they check in.
All right, so the last one, that's the beach at Craigville, so you just down, you took down a piece. This was early morning, this is before, this was Friday morning, I was Friday, everything was done. But, so this is early morning, and sun is coming up on these there, beautiful, beautiful beach, and of course, there's nobody out on the beaches at all. Okay, so then I've got one to talk about, eight towns. You know how many apples it is? And it's kind of, that's what the eight towns thing is, right? It's like trying to make, everybody's gonna be equal as we go into this, because each town has to vote on this, and I just, when I saw that, it was eight apples. That's my grandson. He's looking, he's enamored with clocks of various kinds. That's a chess clock, the chess timer clocks. So it just happened to come together, and of course, you know, we made the eight, so that, we made the eight apples at Thanksgiving, so the next one. This is the talent show, last weekend, last Thursday, last Friday night.
Last Friday.
Yeah, so those are my thoughts.
Great. So Andrea, if you have anything else you want to say, because you're here, didn't respond to that, feel free. Otherwise, thanks so much for coming, and have a really good night.
Thank you. Great, I'm so glad you went again, and I encourage everyone to go to the conference. They'll take back those comments about the eight handouts, they should be there ahead of time, you're right.
It's hard, because people are doing it down to the word. It felt like people were just making presentations, making presentations on that, right? That sense of, oh yeah, I gotta get this in, because I need to put it on my resume, that, right? Some of them were great. That one about the equity one, I mean, it was hard getting it, it was uncomfortable sitting in that for a few, really uncomfortable.
Yes, in the morning, the presentation to you, I thought was very raw.
Yes.
About the indigenous, the indigenous people, native families, very raw. I wish that man would come to every school committee and say what he said, because I think it'd be great. The DEI order is important, and Manuel Fernandez from Cambridge, I think he's a great partner for this committee, committee across the state, and they came to me, you sponsored an event, this committee did with Lennox, and it was really great, and they're gonna continue that work. I want to continue that work, and as a predominantly white community, we are partners in that work, so. So yes, I'll just, I would take that back, it was great.
Great, thanks a bunch.
Thank you all so much, happy holidays.
You too.
So we're gonna transition to student items in a sec, but I just wanted to flag something that's sort of unusual, that the timing works. There's a big storm coming, and like, twenty minutes ago, half an hour ago, I called a snow day for tomorrow. So everybody should have gotten an email and a text and a phone call all at once. Hopefully, we get a lot of snow. My name is mud. And to my knowledge, well, Richmond obviously did, because I'm their superintendent, but every, every other district in, all our adjoining districts are doing the same. And yes, there is a conspiracy, not a coincidence. So I think we'll go to student member items, and let's start at the middle school. Do folks have things you would like to share tonight?
Yes. First of all, I'm a model in seventh grade. The boys, on Wednesday, there was a chorus concert, and I was with Wheat for the third and eighth grade, and Brown and Sunday. And on Monday, there was a band, what was the concert? I don't think, but I'm. I'm forgetting the name right now.
J. K. Winder.
Yeah, and that you shared it.
Yeah. Yesterday, Wednesday, the Social Justice Club helped a field trip over to River Street Project, and we learned how to keep bringing social justice over to our school. Um, so we're at the middle school, we're having a play, it's, we're doing a turnaround, and Cass is. And fifth and sixth grades, we council organized a winter theme spirit meeting next week.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you so much.
To add to that, the eighth graders, we also do the prevention needs assessment survey, which was important, it's like, ten, twelve grade, tells our kind of assets, and some there is concern that we have with our youth, that's really helpful, and that's, we'll come with relative, so we'll get that data, and it forms a lot of our social, emotional learning, well, as initiatives. And we had a really good half-day, E-Day yesterday, horizontal teams got together, and student conferences coming up for January. Now it's a transition from students to reflections on a lot of their work in their core academic and exploratory classes, and now that goes to the crews, so they work on their crew, they should consider a presentation for their families in January, how they're doing in school, what their goals are, and their visions for the rest of the year. And that's what two student reps.
Good. High school things?
There was, as opposed to talent, there's a talent show last Friday. And yesterday, there's a half-day, and the class of twenty-five had a dance during that marketplace, doing a variety, and spend some volleyball, like, competition stuff for the tournament. And the South American government is beginning to plan the winter dance, that will probably help sometime anywhere. And. There's a side meeting, and all the subcommittees and the boss gather, sort of, share it out. And.
That's pretty good, there's two other things that I will share. One is, in light of Peter's announcement, the winter concert that was scheduled for tomorrow next is being postponed till Sunday at four P.M. So I hope folks can join us Sunday for that event. And I also would just like to share an update on the half-day professional development that we had, our clinical and guidance team, we're working with collaborative care partners yesterday, and also, we're thinking in on some of our crisis protocols in the building. Our teachers had all submitted unit and summative assessments that some of our coaches, and Keith Redmond reviewed, and then we put them into two groups, where they were continuing to refine their units, and their summative assessments, with some additional coaching, exemplars and guidance. And so I think that most folks left feeling like it was a productive afternoon, and they were making some progress, and had way on things that they wanted to be continuing to shift into our work with students, so.
Great. And one thing I wanted to share, I'm sharing this with the whole committee, but also with the students, going forward, we're gonna transition from just sharing good news to sharing what in some contexts people speak about as roses and thorns. So the roses would be the good news, and the thorns would be some of the challenges we're working through. Occasionally, folks chide me or us for only sharing like the best things that are going on, but, well, there's lots of really wonderful things going on, there are also things that are challenges. So that'll be something, and I'll check in with you, your principals will check in with you around that, and we'll sort of walk the fine line of sharing some challenges, but maybe not the worst of our dirty laundry, but only some of our dirty laundry. Okay. Good. Another thing I just wanted to share, we have a ten-member school committee, and three of the ten members are from Stockbridge. Right now, we have a vacancy in Stockbridge, so when we have a vacancy, what happens is we do a call for volunteers, and that's on our website now, on the town of Stockbridge's website, and then presumably, we'll get one or more folks who are interested in filling the vacancy. And then our two remaining members, and the three members of the Stockbridge Select Board, will jointly appoint somebody to fill that role. So it's posted, it's out there. If you're from Stockbridge, if you have a friend in Stockbridge, either have them reach out to me or Michael Canales, the town administrator, and we'll get it to those five people, and they'll make a thoughtful decision. And I think for our, depending on swearing in time and stuff, we may have a new school committee member in either mid-January or by the end of January.
I'd just like to add, there is one person, she seems to be a very strong candidate, who was already applied, but more, better, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a test of why you're in that, but yeah, we already have some people who are interested, but again, it's good to put it out, and get as many as you can.
Yeah, and one is all we need, but if other people, I think it's important, the reason we posted was that we have a fair and open process. So we'll get you names, it may just be the one person, or maybe more people, and then you can make a decision. Cool. So the next thing is memorandum of understanding for the secretaries. As you remember, we made adjustments to our, to two other groups previously, the paraprofessionals and the food service folks, and I guess the custodians too, so really three groups. And this is one more in that vein. And the recommendation is to increase the salaries of all the secretaries this year from a three percent increase to a six percent increase, with the exception of one person who's new stepping into the role, who would receive twenty-five cents per hour, but beyond the current contractual amount. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the school committee chairman and superintendent to execute said memorandum.
Do you have a second? So a motion by Rich, a second by Cory, discussion. You're in none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstention? So is unanimous.
Okay. Thank you for that. The next thing, and it's a little bit raining grants at Berkshire Hills, and I'm really proud of our team and how people are writing them, but is, and like, I'll come back, let me go through this one first, and I'll explain the next couple. But we got an Innovation Pathways Grant for fifty thousand dollars to continue to support CBTE opportunities at the, at the high school. So I'd like to request that you vote to approve that. Motion, please.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion other than congratulations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstention? It's unanimous.
So the two other ones that we got are two grants connected to out-of-school time, and I'm not gonna ask you to vote on them today, but I will at the next meeting, but I'll just tell you about them. One's for out-of-schools, like fancy jargon for after-school, right? But fifty-three thousand dollars additional funding for our after-school program, and then connected to that, another twenty thousand dollars, so seventy-three thousand more dollars for our after-school program, so that's great as well.
Peter?
Yeah.
About a year ago, I think, you did a great presentation with all of the grants, and kind of where they were, how much, what the deadline, where to use them, and kind of brief discussion of what they were for, and I feel like that might be helpful to do.
Yeah, not so surprisingly, it's like I paid you to do this. We have something in the packet, and we're gonna talk about it like, soon. Like tonight, three items, so, yeah, so there you go. Thank you. I'll give you five dollars or a year later. So the next thing is, what, Sharon and I are gonna present our draft preliminary fiscal year twenty-four budget. So as you know, we've got a really active and thoughtful finance subcommittee, and we started working on the budget in late August, early September, and then we've had these programmatic overviews throughout the fall. Behind the scenes, the principals have built up budgets and. Behind the scenes, the principals have built up budgets and submitted them to me. And we've met a lot as an administrative team and worked through it. And what Sharon and I are sharing tonight is a broad-based overview of where our budget is, what we think our percentage increase is out now as it stands. But this is like the really high-level one. And then we'll come back later with a budget book, which is sort of an old-fashioned term, right? But like an online file with the whole budget and every single line by line. And that's when we'll really dig into things. The slides we're about to share, we'll give some context and what's going on. And there's some funny things happening with the new governor, stuff happens. And there's some other things we'll we'll talk about. But but this is the, well, all the other programmatic overviews were public. This is like really the, starting to be the most public part of our budget. And for people new to the committee and students in in January and February, we'll go into really nitty-gritty detail on the budget. And then that'll conclude hopefully with the school committee voting to approve or recommend the budget. And then and then we go and present that budget at the three town meetings in Great Barrington, Stockbridge and West Stockbridge. And then hope the voters approve the budget, which historically they have. And they've been really quite generous about it. Okay. So we're going to share some slides. I'll do the first part, Sharon will do the second part. Feel, I mean, we're really informal, feel free to have us pause for questions and order to do questions at the end. Okay. So here we go. So what what we try to do with the budget is continue to provide high-quality education for our students, particularly in these times, arguably in any times, support students' social emotional learning. And then get a big return on our investment. Here, and this is a funny label, but I think you'll understand why we chose it, are known unknowns. So we're going into this budget cycle with a lot of things that are up in the air. We know that they're up in the air, so we can name them, but but we don't know the answers to all of them. We have a new governor, so in the first year of a new governor, they don't have to release his or her budget until March, which is a little unusual because often we get, in any other year, you get the governor's first budget in January. In many ways, this is a good year. This isn't a terrible unknown because there's a huge surplus at the at the state level and and it appears the governor, incoming governor is really committed to education. So conventional wisdom says there's nothing terrible to anticipate. Right? A new governor in a terrible recession with a deficit could really be problematic. The CPI changes, and those are released in in January. That'll mostly impacts insurance and bus transportation. Okay. And then the last one, health insurance rates is often the case, are going to be set in in January. And historically, we've had some really good news around health insurance. We're not sure that's going to happen again this year, but but those are our three known unknowns. Any questions before we go to the next one? Um, so I'm going to go through some high-level priorities. And it's hard to like whittle down everything the principals have articulated, but this is our our simple shot at at doing it. At the elementary school, they really want to focus on a scientifically-based reading program. There's, if you like to read educational news, there's a dramatic shift happening. A lot of people were caught up in a particular approach type of program based at a teacher's college, which was around whole language. And the notion was that readings are pretty natural activity. And if you give kids good books and opportunities to read, they'll grow tremendously. Scientists have known for a long time that that's true for some part of the population, but it's not true for everybody. So if phonics are on one end of the continuum and this whole language is on the other, the space that makes more sense is in the middle or a little leaning towards the phonics side. So this is the shift that's that's occurring now. And it's happening everywhere. And interestingly, the person who led the whole language stuff is eating a little bit of pro and is redefining her own her own work. Katie and folks there would like to continue to do really good work in pre-K to and continue the emphasis on smaller class size. There are two groups that were really, I think, particularly hit hard by the pandemic. Our youngest students were hit hard by the pandemic because they had fewer opportunities to socialize and learn all the things you learn in in pre-K, E K and K. And some of that was was just like interactions, but some of it was pre-literacy stuff. So that's a group we really want to invest some time in. And then the other group, interestingly, are the current eleventh graders because those were the ones that, some of them didn't get fully rooted when they were in ninth grade. And interestingly, the the twelfth graders, it's a really interesting class. It's like filled with robust self-confidence. And and in some ways, the the current ninth and tenth graders are too. But but that's another one. I'll talk about that later. And then the last one for the elementary school is the updated technology for all classrooms, particularly a focus on smart boards as a tool in the classrooms. Okay, any questions on that? Middle school expansion of language-based programming to sixth grade, continued investment in curriculum and curriculum materials, and a continued expansion of field study and service learning. So doing hands-on things that are grounded in the community. And at the high school, adding a health teacher to meet both student needs and state requirements. That's been something we've been talking about for quite a while. Expansion of state-approved C V E, C V T E programs. At the last building committee, I shared that we got a nice loose letter of support from the state around our proposed program, so that's good. And then continued work efforts in the shift to proficiency-based learning. I'm going to have Sharon dig into some of the details on the budgeting and then I'll hop back in.
First, excuse me, slide here is the operating budget as we know it today. After putting, looking at all of the requests and trying to parse those and put those in priority, the operating budget that we're at right now is thirty-three million, four sixty-two, five sixty-six. That's the gross operating budget. That means that's the budget before we take out for the school choice and tuition, as well as the revenue. That's an increase of one million, seven sixty-six, five eighty-nine, or five point five seven percent. It's a, it's slightly less than one percent higher than our gross operating budget increase last year. I tried, I tried this and I would like feedback. Normally, we talk about the summary of the total change, right, of that one point seven million we just talked about. And I've got some feedback that there are some people confused about, is that the category change? Is that a percentage of the total change? So what I did this year was I put the category change as well as the total change and then the dollar amount. And I was hoping that that makes it clearer. If not, please, I'd like feedback on this. So because education is a service business, right? The salary takes the largest part of the budget and when there's the change. So it's fifty-nine percent of the total change, just over a million dollars. But the salaries themselves are increasing five point nine five percent. The teacher's contract is settled through next year. Then the other two for the secretaries and paraprofessionals, as well as what we call the cooperative, that's everybody else, food service, maintenance, custodial, are up for negotiation this year. So that five point nine four includes contingency. Benefits up about seven point seven five percent. That's twenty-nine percent of the total. And again, when we look at the pie chart that we do in the spring, salaries and benefits are the largest part of our of our expenses. As Peter was saying, we kept, even though the insurance went up nine percent last year, we kept it lower, knowing that we were going to have a premium holiday. But we need to start catching up or we're going to end up with a really large increase at some point in the future. So I'm adding that in right now. Utilities are up nineteen point five percent and they make up seven point six two percent of the total change for one hundred thirty-four, seven hundred. The utilities, as Steve had talked about it, we all know, electricity, gas, oil, everything is going up. I think we have our electricity in there. Steve has a new contract. That's up about forty-nine percent for each of those. So if that's where that increase is coming from. Then we go into educational services and tuition. There, that change is six point four two, and it also happens to be close to the total change of six point seven nine. That is our out-of-district students, that's school choice, virtual high school, credit recovery, transportation up one point one nine, and the total, it's total part of the change, one point seven three. Like, it does look like the CPI is coming in around seven point seven seven percent. But because of the shifting demographics and location of our students and the number of students we were able to cut bust this year, so that's why the increase is lower than that seven point seven percent. Technology up about four point three seven or point eight two of the total change. A good deal of that is in software. We're pretty consistent with what we budgeted for hardware. And we are looking at our inventory and a replacement cycle. So that stays about the same, but our software is more and more going online. We're we're having to increase that. Athletics and activities, it's up six point one four, but it's only about six point six three percent of the total change. And a good deal of that is in the transportation, increase for transportation. As Christie has talked about before, Carlos talked about, because of the way the MIAA has reorganized divisions, we have to go to the eastern part of the state often. So it's just, it's out of our control of, you know, what we need to do there. Facilities and operations, one point five four percent or point six two percent of the change is only eleven thousand. That includes the, you know, supplies for custodial, maintenance, all of that. Other administrative is basically the other transportation for the private schools. We cut some of the supplies lines, so that's down four percent or point four three of the total. Legal and other insurance, it's down three percent or point six three of the total change. That's because our workers' comp cost is down. They they do a running, it's like a three-year total, and a lot of our bigger claims has come out. So we were able to reduce that. Professional development is down sixteen point four seven percent or one point five two percent of the total change. But we are still committed to professional development. It's just because we're fortunate with our, all of our grants still, that we're able to cover a lot of that through grants. And then educational supplies, materials and equipment is down fourteen point one three percent or three, down three point eight percent of the the total change. Again, we look at the needs, we were able to get our math supplies, which we had increased last year's budget because we were doing a home and math curriculum. We got that through a state program, so we were able to cut that. So it's, we're not, we're reducing a lot of the increases we did last year for what we thought we were going to have to do this year. So we're not, we're not shortchanging the buildings, we're just reducing what we had put in last year. The capital budget, this is good news. Capital budget is the final payment on the school bonds for the elementary and middle school. I think when we make that payment, at a half celebration. Total is one million, seven sixteen, eight seventy-five. And then when we take out the MSBA, there's actually the next slide. There's actually no E and D this year, so I need to take that off. It's just the MSBA. And that is down nine point six percent. The capital budget is down. One of the questions that's come up is, well, what about all the other work and purchases? And Steve's very comfortable, we don't have, with his cycle of replacements for equipment, we don't have any of that coming up next year. And any of the work he needs to do, we could either do through grants for security or in his regular budget. So we didn't need to add that this year to the capital. Then on to assessments. The, as Peter said, this is a really high-level presentation in December. And there are three considerations for the member towns, the population allocation between the three towns, the minimum local contribution, which I am deep in the weeds on because each district this year has to project their own because the governor's budget won't come out, which we normally use until March. So I'm putting that together and it's quite frightening. And then the net assessment after we take. What we have right now is the assessments to member towns. And we look at the difference in the population allocation. Great Barrington went from seventy-three point four eight eight four to seventy-four point four eight oh four, so almost a percent there. Stockbridge went down slightly, three point seven two oh nine to three point one six four. And I have the number of students underneath, that's what those, that's what those other numbers are. And then West Stockbridge also decreased slightly, the twelve point seven nine oh seven to twelve point three five five seven. As you see, because there have so few students, even three, you know, decreases that quite a bit. Questions?
Sorry, I could go back to. The technology upgrades for the smart board at the elementary school?
We're looking at a grant on that.
Oh, great. Would Plan B be the operating budget or?
Plan B would be, but, yes, Plan B would be. And we're very confident that we have some money in one of our existing.
That's perfect.
The the real question, which is way too early to tell, is revenue, which it's true, that that will drive what the increases are.
Actually, it's the minimum local more because our revenue from, I mean, everything, obviously, all of them. The only one that looks like it would change, at all, two of them, the increase to chapter seventy-one because of the amount that they're projecting to increase and the amount that we spend. And they don't have that now because, believe it or not, there's still about a dozen end-of-the-year reports that haven't been filed from last year. So that's what it's based on. And then we're going to get the minimum thirty dollars a student.
Or maybe like they'll go crazy and give us sixty dollars a student.
Yeah, the, I was just on with Desi and they said to project thirty.
Okay. Our E and D at the end of the year.
They're still working on that, we're projecting. They're still working on that, we're projecting that at one million, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Which is healthy.
Yes, and yes.
We'll have the same discussion.
So, so that is, I'm not projecting even on the, the operating amount, we won't have the amount that we put in last year for E and D because we're not having the additional expense. So I'm, I'm I'm going to be recommending even from last year.
An increase from last year.
I'm recommending that the operating, that the use of E and D for the operating budget will be the same as what we used last year for the operating budget.
Which gives you a chance to increase it.
Yeah, I know that I should put it in like half of what I recommend, but.
Then just pause a minute.
Other questions?
Go ahead. Does money go into, since we're, we're going to pay off the loans next year? Okay, yeah, so then the year after we'll start putting money aside to.
Well, we really have to have that discussion because either we put it aside, which I think is a good idea, or we convince the towns to put in a stabilization fund, but someone's got to put it aside so that the effect when the new school is approved and I'm being positive.
It's flat.
It's flat, it's not a huge jump. Exactly, so yes, that's something we have to talk about, that's an excellent point.
And the other one is funds to make sure there's enough buses that kids can do after-school things.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll talk a lot about that, but we can use some grant funds, but I think what we can do more is, is move, move existing routes around and get kids onto existing routes.
And next to ages up.
So, so there can be the bus, the secondary run at two forty-five, elementary run at three thirty, and the after-school run at five. And anybody who wants to go at any one of those times could go on any one of those buses.
Unless you're, money work, you can't go with the.
Right.
Right, because you're in school. Well, almost anyone. Almost anybody. So last couple ones, just reiterating the three known unknowns, right? We don't hear from the governor till March, the CPI changes in the health insurance, and then the pre-case census, any unanticipated program changes or any unanticipated placements. Doesn't happen a lot, but it could.
So the, the high school health teachers in that, in the number you gave us tonight?
And that's it, and we take questions, but, but are there more questions?
Every decrease, every percent decrease at the last by, it's gonna be meaning I want to make sure it was, I got it correct, is equal to three hundred thousand dollars?
A little more, three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
The total? From the last, right? If we did it now, it would be, it was three sixty before, it's three forty now. Right, because it's a percent of the thirty-three million.
Any other questions on the budget?
What did you do with the hundred and sixteen thousand for high school renovations that every year we talk about? Is that in there or is that?
It's not in there. It can be added back in.
From E and D, yes.
Well.
Buildings and grounds right now, it's like major proposals, right?
Right, it's not going to be the total hundred and sixteen, or maybe sometime next week, see if there's any pressing. At this point, it's not going to be close to one sixteen.
That's like Steve thinks that he may be able to.
I was just curious whether it was in there or not.
No.
That's fine.
We just assumed it would be in there, but.
And I, and I was hoping it wasn't, so. All right, sorry, I think that too many windows open presenting things. So the next thing we put on the agenda, and thank you Sharon for your work on this and the principals and Kate for your work on this behind the scenes. The, the next thing I wanted to talk about briefly was the parent family committee opportunities. So I committed this to a spreadsheet and obviously I'm going to work with somebody who's sort of got a graphic ability to make it more accessible once, once we agree to it. But what I have now is like a little spreadsheet with four columns and in each of the columns are a number of things that are happening. At the district level, the most obvious is the, is the school committee and then their subcommittees within it. There's a family liaison through VIM that's connecting with families regularly. There's the building committee, the outreach committee that we're about to codify, a special ed parent advisory council, an English language learner parent advisory council, and the portrait of the graduate community conversations that we'll really talk more about in the new year. But we're going to host four conversations with not just parents and families, but community members in Stockbridge, West Stockbridge, and one in Husatonic and one in, in Great Barrington. So, so that'll be good. And then, and then underneath it are all the other things we try to do, like parent nights newsletters, parent square family forums, et cetera. The other one that's a really big one, and it's not the district level, but it's at the school level, is really the primary point of contact for most families or individual teachers and them making phone calls and emails. We then go to each of the individual buildings and the structures are slightly different. There are parent advisory councils, the PTA is very active at the elementary school and there tend to be more events and parent volunteers there and some other things connected to it. As, as students get older, the role of the PTA sort of shifts. And, and there are a host of other things. There's a family advisory council, there's coffees with the clinicians, project connection things, family crew and community crew. And then when we get to the high school, there's still a parent advisory council, but there's start being things tied quite specifically to student interest. So there's the, the chapter seventy-four general advisory council, and that's not just parents, it's a lot of business people. And then there are advisory committees to each of the programs. There's an automotive one, there's a forder culture one, so on and so forth. There's also a lot of work tied to booster clubs, so almost every athletic group has its own existing booster club. Some are super active and, and some throw a celebration at the end of the year. And the Shakespeare and the musical booster clubs act quite like the athletic booster clubs in terms of they're rallying around supporting something. There's a, a wide range of things that the musical booster club has done from raising money to actually helping in, in set builds and, and things like that. And then, and then we stuck it here, but it could really go anywhere, is the eight-ten. The eight-ten groups. So that's a high-level overview. I think we got most of the things. Did, did anybody else have questions about that or other things? And I see one hand up and I'll call on, on that person if it's okay with you, Steve. Erica, go ahead.
Thank you, Erica Milky and Husatonic. I forget if this is the meeting I'm supposed to say those things on. I have the lovely, one of the lovely flu strains going around, so pardon my voice and the coughing in the background. This is very helpful as, as a starting point. I am, I think the biggest question that keeps coming up for me is, what is SAB? And the subcommittees that, that, that are doing work, I've heard mention of like, um, an equity subcommittee and stuff, and I'm curious how that's different from what we were trying to do with the inclusion task force under Stoke and where that comes in here.
Let me have Christie come up and speak to it. SAB just stands for the Student Adult Advisory Board. But that's a.
But the adults aren't community members or parents.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and the, the tension is around this. Students and staff, it's really a scheduling thing. Students and staff can meet during the day when parents and family members often can't meet. And parents and family members can often meet late in the afternoon or early evening when students may be engaged in other activities and, and staff may be gone. Now, that's not entirely accurate all the time, but that's part of it. But let's have Christie talk to it some as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I also just want to remind everybody, this began out of the initiative at the high school around building student voice. And last year it was called the Student Advisory Board. And it is the students that wanted to rename it in partnership with the adults in the building, the Student and Adult Advisory Board, and that is directly connected to the work that we've been doing with Upstart Learning around any, any change we're making in high school should be being done with the adults in the building in partnership with the students in the building. That is not to say that we do not value parent input, but at the high school level in particular, the goal around this work is around amplifying the student voices. And so that it's not just the adults in the building making decisions, right, it's the students and adults in the building together working to make decisions. And so I apologize that there's been some confusion in the community that the adults stood for like community adults, but it's the internal school community adults that were actually regarding.
Got it, I love, I love that Christie, I think the student voices are really important.
Oh, I just could say, kind of just what I had to say is that like, it's like there's student facilitators for each place, subcommittee, so there's like, there's just a bunch of different subcommittees. People like, or maybe ones like just based on like what the students are interested in. And then mostly like, like Mr. Wright will just kind of like go around, because that's like, I don't know, that's his thing with the. And just like checking on everyone, and I know I have a Smith helps out with the wellness group a lot. And, but it's like student facilitated with like, I guess, I don't know, adults just kind of like check in and make sure everything's.
Is it working?
Yeah, I really enjoy stuff and I, like I said, I'm with the ones committee and we have made a lot of progress.
And there's one on assessments too, isn't there?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, there's one on equity and like race and stuff, and then there's one for. Wellness and school spirit and.
Great, well, thank you. So hopefully that, that clarifies it. I'll try to get it into a, a format that's like one level clearer with times and places and people to reach out to, and then it won't be in a spreadsheet, it, it might be something that's more friendly to look at. So the next thing you have in front of you is the, the giant document. That's a giant, nine pages that talks about revolving funds and, and grants. So I think, Corey, this is some of what you were.
We did last year, we did the numbers.
So, so this gives a little bit of context to it. Some of the, the federal grants are starting to dry up and then we keep getting new, new competitive grants, but this shares some good context and, and we can do a future update with, with dollar amounts. Regional School District Planning Board is, is plugging away.
Get shared more broadly and widely than the school committee meetings. Like, can I get posted some? I feel like other people ask about this stuff that might not be too good in today's meeting.
Yeah, totally.
I think we did, did we do something?
It's interesting because it's not part of the budget, but maybe we do like a last page and then a color between it or something.
I do, there is a sec. We do, do a section that is, was a shorter overview of the grants and like balances, but we could certainly just add this in, pick it up and put it in there and have it grants and revolving funds and have a complete overview and then the detail.
Great. Steve, you're at the last Regional School District Planning Board, any updates to share?
I think, I think the script will continue to plug along. We have finally decided the recommendation for school committee will be eleven members. Three from Great Barrington, two from Sheffield and one from all the other towns. Took two meetings to decide, it was a difficult decision. I, I think we're moving along, we have two meetings scheduled for January, two for February. And I, I think we will be ready for a vote this year. We also got the grant, Peter, I don't know that you announced that.
Oh yeah, there was another grant. So we applied for the Community Compact slash Regionalization and Efficiency Grant. And we were awarded a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars directly from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito. If you haven't seen the breaking news, Governor Baker is the incoming head of the N double, NCA, NCA.
So Sarah, you were at last night's meeting, was that your first meeting? Will you come back? It's pretty intense. Apparently Southern Bercher gives and has it as a standing agenda item as we do, but they go into great detail. Well, when we get to the end, we'll give you the details. I mean, we, we give the highlights.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
So that reached all the way to Eastern Massachusetts.
Next year, we'll, we'll send a couple more people with you.
You haven't asked me about that, we need you.
So the, the MSBA, we had a nice meeting of the, the building committee. Jason, do you want to talk to that at all? Just where Steve shared his.
Yeah, I mean, just basically Steve, he sold him great debt. Maximize the two percentage points for showing how well we have cut. Okay, not just the building, not just the high school, all the schools and grounds in the district. And he got the full two percentage points last time, or just usually around the first hundred million dollar project that's four million dollars. You know, small percentage points, but he basically just went through all, he had to all the different criteria and all the different things that MSBA had to request it. And basically talked about how he's going to answer those.
Great. The, so subcommittee. Policy has not met, buildings and grounds have you met? Um, policy has not met, buildings and grounds have you met? Superintendent's evaluation? It's on the bottom, it's on the twentieth. Yes, sorry, uh, finance has, has not met. Yeah, and negotiations will be gearing up shortly, I don't know if we're gonna have time, but we'll figure it out. Yeah, um, personnel report, do you have anything to add? Yeah, I just wanna, uh, recognize, this is the time of year when we start to hear about retirements. And, uh, one of our really wonderful teachers, Catherine Elliott, has announced her, uh, intention to retire at the end of this year. Uh, she's an extraordinary French teacher, the extraordinary French teacher at, at Du Bois. Uh, and she's gotten a whole generation of young people really excited about learning French and, and French culture. And that's included, uh, trips and trips to Canada and everywhere. So, uh, we, we wish her a really strong finish and we'll celebrate her, um, uh, later. But, uh, she, she's really been, uh, quite wonderful, and I hope we can find some way to, to keep her involved in. Learning and helping her, her colleagues grow post-retirement.
Thank you. Just happy to see, um, an athletics type in at the middle school on the personal report, I don't know if I've seen that before, but that's, uh. I assume that kind of sprung board off our conversations we had back in the spring about sports.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a little bit of a history, floor hockey, soccer, some, some other, other activities.
I learned some more of that.
Yeah, so we can build our dynasty.
Of floor hockey.
So I have one thing that's not personnel, but it's, um, the C bus has not missed a single game so far this year. In terms of getting our athletes to and from games, apparently we're the only, the only school district in the county that has gotten all their kids to all of their games. Have been had to cancel any because of lack of buses or drivers.
Wow, that's impressive. Yeah. Pretty, pretty remarkable, any older new business before the. Um, seeing no older new business, any public comment? Seeing none, are you unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody, have a good, safe night.